Okay, I'd like to begin today's public hearing regarding the proposed Plan Amendment to the Bergen County District Solid Waste Management Plan. My name is Richard Weir, I'm the Director of Solid Waste for the Bergen County Utilities Authority, and my life is Jay Plachek, who's with our General Counsel's Office. Before we begin the public portion of the meeting, I'd like to enter into the record a few documents. I'd like to enter in as Exhibit A and B, proof of the meeting which was published in the New Jersey Herald News, and the record on September 8th, 2023, and September 15th, 2023, as required by law. These exhibits have already been given to the court of court. I'd also like to enter into the record a certification signed by myself, certifying that a copy of the Plan Amendment public hearing notice was served by a first-class mail to all seven Bergen County municipalities, county clerk, the county executive, and the clerk to the Board of Bergen County Commissioners. I'd like to enter that as Exhibit C.
What were the dates for the amendments?
For September 8th and September 15th.
Thank you.
The notice was also published in English and Spanish on the BCUA website and the Bergen County Utilities Authority, Bergen County, website. I'd like to enter into Exhibit, as Exhibit D, the screenshots of both those websites as proof of the posting of those notices. The notice was also posted in English and Spanish here in the Borough Library and I believe also the Borough Hall. And I'd like to thank the Borough of Oakland for providing us this location to host this meeting, and I'd like to thank everyone for attending this hearing, which relates to a proposed amendment to the Bergen County District Solid Waste Management Plan to incorporate the Oakland Materials LLC Class B Recycling Facility located on Block 5, Lot 103, 342, West Oakland Avenue in Oakland, New Jersey, into the Bergen County District Solid Waste Management Plan.
Do you repeat Block and Lot?
Block 5, Lot 103.
How's that back, and the opposite? I have just Block 5, Lot 103.
Block 103, Block 5 is what I have. A little left to make a... I have Block 5, Lot 103, which was on the application, but if that's incorrect, we can change that. We'll confirm that later. Just as a summary, on September 17th, 2017, Oakland Materials LLC Class B Recycling Facility filed an application with the Bergen County Utilities Authority to incorporate the Class B Recycling Facility into the Solid Waste Management Plan. The proposed Plan Amendment incorporates the facility into the plan subject to the receipt of all permits and approvals. An initial hearing was conducted by the BCUA on December 14th, 2017, at the BCUA facility located in New York Ferry, New Jersey. On August 23rd, 2018, the application and a resolution was forwarded to the Bergen County Board of Freeholders, now known as Bergen County Board of Commissioners. Subsequent to that August 23rd resolution, on April 23rd, 2019, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection issued certain directives regarding Plan Amendment public hearings. One of those directives was to require that any Plan Amendment public hearing must be held in the host community during the business day, hence that is why we're conducting today's hearing, to comply with the NJDEP directive. The purpose of today's hearing is to solicit any public comment regarding this proposed Plan Amendment. This Plan Amendment is just that, an amendment to the Bergen County Solid Waste Management Plan. It is not authorization to operate a facility. It does not include any permitting requirements. Any permit, any that is required in order to operate this facility must be done by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection as a separate application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. I'd like to ask that Mr. Salerno, I believe, would you be the first to present for the applicant?
Yes, if I may.
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Jerry Salerno to give his presentation regarding this proposed application. Are you going to... I think because we're on TV, they want to have the, if you're using the words.
The microphone's in the ceiling.
No, we're using our camera there.
Are you using, not our microphone?
No.
Yeah, this way I can see it also.
Yeah, that'd be good, if you can...
Okay.
Just one second. You will sit with him, please.
You're going to put the displays on that podium there?
Yeah, right there. I'm quoting a little bit, or the easel.
Can you move it to the left, is that all right, towards the little table there? That'd be good, thank you.
Can you see it? I can see it, yep. Okay, you're good.
Thank you.
Cameron, you did?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Weir. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is General R. Salerno, and we pull off from the Marines and you know Salerno and Kaufman, 21 Main Street, Hackett Sec, New Jersey. I'm here today representing Oakland Materials LLC, who is the applicant for the Class B license that we described. I intend to present the testimony of our engineer licensed planner to explain the project, to explain the existing conditions, and to talk a little bit about the operations at the site. So, with your permission, I would like to call Kelly O'Sutch as our first speaker.
Mr. O'Sutch. Do you swear, or... Are you swearing, or the testimony you're about to give is the truth, or is it not the truth?
I do.
Mr. O'Sutch, can you give us the benefit of your educational background?
Yes, so I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Virginia Tech. I graduated in 2012.
And are you licensed in New Jersey?
I am licensed in good standing as both a professional engineer and a professional planner, and I am also a certified municipal engineer in the state as well.
Have you previously testified to be qualified as an expert in engineering and or planning before any planning was in the state of New Jersey?
I have.
Various number of boards?
Throughout the state, but locally or close to where we are today, Compton Lakes is their planning board and their redevelopment committee is one that I've been involved in.
Can, could you generally describe your employment over the past 11 years?
Yes, I've been working in the state of New Jersey, designing site development, land development, along with Class B facilities throughout the state, to present to various planning boards, zoning boards, if not prepared or presented in front of a utility authority or five. This would be the first.
But you have previously been involved in the design and site, I have a Class B recycling facility, do you say?
I have.
And who are you currently employed with?
The engineering firm Engineering and Way Planning, goes by E and LP for...
Sure. And did E and LP prepare a Class B site plan for the subject property you're on?
Yes, our office prepared a layout plan that has been the subject of this application.
Can you describe to us the existing conditions on the site?
Yeah, sure, I'll introduce, I guess the first things in here.
Can we mark as A1?
Or, I don't know.
Okay. We use A, you need the...
Sixty-eight, go. And for the record, Exhibit E is survey, Block 103, Block 5, for West Oakland Properties LLC.
Can you speak up, please, sir, or speak to the audience so we can hear? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to read it so I got it right. Again, this is a survey, Block 103, Block 5, for West Oakland Properties LLC, and it was prepared by Shaden Wong and Hale's Engineering.
Can you generally describe the site in terms of dimensions, et cetera?
Yes, so the existing property is known as Block 103, Lot 5 on the local tax map, and it is approximately 2.03 acres in size. The property is surrounded to the north by an existing railroad, to the south by West Oakland Avenue, and then to the east and west by industrial uses.
And you want to bring up the aerials, which will mark them as Exhibit F? And this is an aerial photograph that your office obtained?
Yes.
And it fairly accurately depicts the site as it exists today, an aerial photograph of yours?
Correct. So, for the record, the name of this exhibit is Aerial Exhibit Site Map, dated September 28th, 2023, also today's date.
Yeah, just describe the property, perhaps if you could show us on the aerial, the property you're describing.
Sure, so north aerial here, just for orientation, north is straight up on the property. So, the subject property is outlined in this bold line. To the north is that existing railroad line. Further north is Edison Avenue, and then there's a tri-wire that comes through. To the south is West Oakland Ave, and then to the east and to the west are industrial uses similar to what is on that subject property.
Excuse me, could you highlight the property for us directly? I'm sorry to interrupt, sir. We can't see because the podium's in the way.
Right here, if you can see the bold outline of the property.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
What zone is the property located in?
The property is located within the I-1 Zone, according to the local zoning of the Borough of Oakland, and within the I-1 Zone, some of the uses that are permitted include open storage yards, storage of building materials, contractors' equipment and supplies, research and experimental laboratories, truck terminals, warehouses, just to name a few.
Is the lot currently developed?
It is currently developed, as you can see from the aerial in front of you, it's used as a contractor's storage yard, and my understanding is there's multiple tenants that are currently using this property as a storage yard. So, in and out of the site currently are multiple tenants and traffic associated with that.
What type of equipment is utilized in connection with its presence on the area?
So, on-site, there is building materials stored, there are equipment stored on the property, and in and out of the, the site would be dump trucks on a regular basis. On-site, there are excavators, ladders to move the equipment and the materials around. Some of the other material that's stored on-site are storage containers, construction material bins, construction materials, and vehicles.
Can you describe the impervious coverage of the site as it exists?
Sure, so as you can kind of see in the aerial, virtually all of the existing property is impervious, with the exception of a section along the southern edge, which is a vegetative boundary, and also has significant topographic relief which goes down to a lower elevation down along West Oakland Avenue.
Is the site serviced by utilities?
Yes, it's currently served by public water and public electric sources, public electric. And then for sanitary purposes, there's a portable unit on-site, so it's not connected to public service.
Is the site secured?
The site is partially secured currently, there's a chain link fence that's not fully enclosing the property, but the majority of the property.
And although, we'll get to it later, is it the intention to fully secure the property with a fence in the event this application?
That's my understanding, along with the gate at the entrance point.
Can you describe to us the access to our...
Yeah, I think it'd maybe be more helpful to provide a separate aerial that's zoomed out a little bit further for them.
Now, is this a different exhibit?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to refer to this, remark this, as Exhibit G? And just for the record, maybe if you could give us an identification?
Yes, so for the record, this one is entitled Aerial Exhibit Site Vicinity Map. Again, north is straight up, so north is here, east is on this side of the image, west, south. The subject property down in the bottom left corner, or the southwest corner of the image, 287 is running kind of right through the center of this image. There is a northbound lane, a northbound exit, there is a southbound lane, a southbound exit, and then a southbound entrance and a northbound entrance, all to 287. So generally, to access the property for the types of traffic that currently serve the property, the majority of the traffic is coming off of 287, whether north or southbound, accessing via West Oakland Ave to the south, coming down to Edison Ave where they're making a right-hand turn, and then following Edison Ave down to the Colsec, which is ultimately accessed via a crossing at grade with the railroad into the subject property. And then the egress of the site is generally just reverse of that, so you would be crossing back over that railroad, back up Edison Ave, making a left onto West Oakland Ave, and then heading north towards 287, and then again, conveniently this exit at 287 has both a north and a southbound opening, so depending on the traffic, whether you're going north towards New York or south towards the rest of New Jersey, you have access in either direction.
Now, the application we're here to talk about is for a Class B facility, correct?
That is correct.
And could you just explain to us what exactly is a Class B facility?
So, a Class B facility is a recycling facility. It is, as Mr. Weir noted, approved or regulated under the DEP's rules. Typically, the Class B materials are previously installed or utilized construction materials that would be brought to a property, processed, and then removed from the property or sold as new material or recycled materials after they've been processed on the property.
So what types of materials are we generally talking about?
Generally, at least for this particular site, we're talking about concrete, asphalt, red bricks, and concrete blocks.
And are there specific regulations by that you can see that govern exactly what can and cannot be brought to this facility?
That is correct, and there would be no contaminated soil or contaminated material brought to the property.
Okay, and are there DEP regulations and requirements that require, or regulate, or help ensure that no contaminated products are brought to the site?
Yes, so part of the requirements under the Class B rules is every material that is brought to the site has to be provided under a manifest with a certification of where the material is sourced, and that it generally complies, not generally, it does comply with the requirements under the Class B approval, assuming the site does have a Class B approval. So, if there were ever any materials brought to the site, you have an understanding of where they came from and how to go back after it. Further to that, the DEP, assuming they grant the rights to this approval or this proposal and the site, they have the right under their regulations to come to the site at any given time, test the materials, make sure that you are meeting the requirements that were approved of, or you're complying with those.
And is your understanding that the operator of the facility would also maintain its own self-policing to ensure as best it could that no contaminated products would go up to the site?
That is my understanding, yes.
Are there other, is sand and stone also brought, going to be brought to this facility?
Yes, so there would be sand, stone, and topsoil on the property, those are not regulated under the Class B rules, but they would be stored and sold on the property as well.
Why don't we bring up the next exhibit, which we'll mark as Exhibit H, which is the site plan?
All right, for the record, this is entitled Class B Site Plan, and was last revised April 4th, 2017.
Exhibit H. Can you describe the proposed site plan to us?
Sure, so for orientation purposes, this one is, north is kind of on an angle, again, going back to where that previous exhibit, we're showing the railroad, the railroad here is on the left-hand side of the sheet, or the section of the property. Again, access would remain in the same location off of that at-grade crossing of the railroad coming into the property, and then once we're in the property, what we're showing here are three separate stockpiles, two of which would be the stockpiles for the Class B materials, and they would be separated by concrete, brick, and concrete blocks, and then a pile for asphalt. When the materials come in, they're known as either raw or unprocessed materials, and they would be stockpiled within these locations, and a mobile crusher, or mobile plant as it's referred to, comes through and processes that material and/or crushes the material, for lack of a better term, and then a area of processed material would be located on the other end of these stockpiles. And these, depending on the amount of material, whether processed or unprocessed, they kind of move in and out throughout this section. So basically, the idea would be, you start with an unprocessed on this side, and depending on how much unprocessed material you have, it could be all within this bubbled area, and then as it gets processed, more and more processed material kind of comes through. These stockpiles are marked permanently with markers on the ground around the site so that the total amount of material that is approved under the Class B approval to DEP, should this receive it, is located in accordance with the plans that were approved, along with a height marker that also notes that the material can't get any higher than these allowable per the approval.
So the amount of material that can be brought on the site, scored on the site, is regulated by the license issued by the DEP?
Correct. And for the Class B materials proposed on this particular site, it would be at any given time of 19,094 cubic yards of Class B material. And the total height allowed would be 30 feet for the Class B stockpiles.
What about the C?
So again, C is not regulated under the Class B requirements, that would be the topsoil stockpile, but that would be no higher than 20 feet.
What would be the total volume?
Total volume for the topsoil would be 4,348 cubic yards of material.
Wouldn't there be access drives around the stockpiles?
Yeah, so again, entering the site off of the north, off of Edison Ave and crossing the railroad, you would come in, and we have general arrows here to kind of define the circulation that we would anticipate the traffic to have. So they would come in along the northern edge of the property, and depending on the material either brought into the site or being picked up to be leaving the site, the trucks would come in, circulate through, and either dump in the unprocessed area, and/or keep circulating through and having equipment load processed material into their trucks, and then ultimately circulating back out to the same egress point in the northwest corner of the property.
What type of containment measures would be utilized on site to limit dust created in the stockpile?
So the mobile crushers do have, my understanding, do have sprinklers on them, and they would be, as they're running at all times, the spraying water, dispersing water on the materials to limit any dust and/or air quality release issues from those materials.
And are those requirements also governed by the DEP's Class B requirements?
They're governed by the Class B requirements, and further, there's other air quality standards in the state that have to be met regardless of the Class B materials.
So who would you, who would be expected to utilize this facility?
I would anticipate that you would see site contractors and/or utility contractors coming in out of this property that would be picking up material that they would be using either for site development work, utility work, trenchback fill, and/or subgrade improvements for specifically crush concrete. For the asphalt, you could potentially see people using that for subgrade and/or, depending on the material, recading of sites. And then for the topsoil, I think you're seeing a lot of subcontractors picking that up to utilize for restoration of previously disturbed and vegetated areas.
What type of construction equipment would you, would be located on site?
As a construction equipment, you'll have loaders, excavators, and the mobile crusher, as well as a couple other ancillary items. The vehicles entering and exiting, I would say the majority would be tandem axle dump trucks that you would see at any type of site utility and/or site improvement contractor, typically using to bring materials to and from their respective project.
Isn't some of that similar type of equipment already located on the site and is current operating?
Yeah, as was shown on that exhibit previously, you could see that there was very similar materials and equipment are used on the property.
And what type of noise levels would you expect from this type of operation?
There will be noise from the mobile crusher and from the construction equipment, but again, we kind of looked at this holistically with surrounding the area, the existing use of the property, and the existing railroad that is active, and from a noise perspective, we don't anticipate any significant changes from what's currently operating on property and surrounding the property.
Site access would remain unchanged, correct?
Correct.
Now, you've already described to us the traffic pattern to and from 287, correct?
Correct.
So, where is the scale house located?
So, entering the property off of Edison Ave, again, crossing over the at-grade railroad crossing, as soon as you get into the site, there's a proposed scale house, both to monitor material coming into the property as well as material leaving the property on a by-weight basis, is my understanding.
There'll be no change then to the impervious coverage on the site?
No, so as was shown on that aerial exhibit, the site is virtually all impervious on the northern portion of the existing property, that would remain unchanged. The southern end would still be vegetated and have that significant topographic relief back down towards West Oakland Ave. We will be supplementing our vegetated buffer with a vegetated burn with some arbor mighty that would be planted at eight foot high along that southern edge of deep what was previously impervious coverage of the property.
Could you just explain to us the topographic conditions up in the area where you're just describing the, are the bodies are going to be planted?
Sure, so currently, the, currently what we're showing, or what was shown via the survey, the elevation along this southern line, or my pointers, that currently is approximately elevation 100, and when you get down to Oakland Ave, depending on where you're measuring, you're down to an elevation of approximately 76. So, for lack of a better term, there's more than 20 feet of vertical drop from where these materials would be stored down to the road elevation.
So if you were at the road elevation, would the additional... So if you were at the road elevation with the additional screening and the existing buffer, it would be, it would be a pretty good buffer looking into the site, correct?
Yeah. Any views into the site would be obstructed via some of that vegetation on that bad area, along with the topographic relief.
What are the proposed hours of operation of the facility?
My understanding is the proposed hours of operation would be Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And then Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. and then nothing on Sundays.
What other approvals were required from other agencies in connection with this application?
Well, before the Bergen County Utility Authority, so obviously then, Bergen County Solid Waste Advisory Council had previously recommended that the county board of commissioners amend the plan to be considered. And that was back in January of this year. And then, the applicant has also obtained a Highlands exemption in August of 2020, basically understanding that there's no changes in the impervious coverage and Highlands has no other issue.
And what?
There's no change in the impervious coverage and then the Highlands would have no other issue with the application.
The Highlands?
The Highlands, sorry.
And there was a Highlands exemption for the site, correct?
Correct.
Did ELP prepare an environmental impact statement for this Class B facility?
Yes, our office prepared a Class, for EIS, for this proposed use. Again, we kind of looked at it from both what's on the site and how the site currently operates and compared that to the proposed use and looking at if that proposed use would impact the environment in any significant way.
Okay. And just for the record, essentially referring to the environmental impact statement that was prepared was dated September 26th, 2023, correct?
Correct.
And if we could mark the environmental impact statement as a exhibit I? Can I hand you a copy?
You can hand the court reporter a copy, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
So generally, in that EIS, we were looking at, we'll take a step back. The borough of Oakland doesn't have an ordinance requirement that defines what should be looked at within an EIS. But anecdotally and from our experience around the state, we kind of put together an EIS based on similar types of uses in other municipalities around the state. Some of the things we looked at, according to the existing conditions of the property and what was being proposed were, again, the air quality, any water impacts, noise, soil erosion of soils, among other things that are in the EIS. And really, the summaries of findings in the EIS were that there would be really no significant impacts to the environment if this proposed development or proposed use goes through. Soil erosion sediment control plan would be required since there's really no disturbance being proposed or earthwork breeding, any of that is really proposed, so that's minimal impacts. Public water that would be used on the property will be used to mitigate and control the dust from the Class B operations. Noise, again, would be very similar to what's on site today, as well as the ambient noises from the train, the traffic on West Oakland Ave and the surrounding industrial uses within that industrial zone. So again, in summary, there really was nothing significant that we found within that EIS as far as an environmental effect.
Thank you. I hope for the questions.
Thank you very much. I have a couple quick questions. And you stated in your testimony that the facility would not be taking patrolling containment slough? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And also, just to confirm that you did receive the Highlands exemption?
Correct. August of 2020.
And it wasn't even...
Can I ask you any additional questions?
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
I'd like to now open up the hearing to any public that wishes to be heard. Please come to the DAS, state your name. I'm going to go first, you're on the first. Clear so that the court reporter can get your name and address in case we have any information we'd like to send out.
My name is Pasqual Pignatelli, P-I-G-N-A-T-E-L-L-I. I have with me today a petition signed by approximately 70 residents and not addition to the recycling plan.
Would you like to enter into that, add into it as a...
Yes, I would.
J. Exhibit J. Give it to the court reporter, please.
I also, I remember you saying that the...
Just one second.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I also remember you saying that public notice was given in the Harold's?
The Harold and the record, yes, sir.
Oh, and the record. Okay. Because I was going to say Harold's is not why they...
No, the administrative code requires us to publish it to local papers.
Just to reiterate what I said about the petition, I was at a senior citizen meeting today. They're vehemently opposed to this for many reasons. I understand the traffic, the road is not really that wide. They're concerned about traffic because we have a traffic problem already here in Oakland. And this would just add to the problem. The other question is, is there any benefit to the town for having this here?
Do you mean...
Monetarily?
There is no, I mean, there is no required host community fee for recycling facilities?
So they get to operate in our community for free?
They would operate under whatever state statutes and regulations require. And it would be the same across any municipality.
So you realize that this is a big change for the borough of Oakland. And I would hope that some type of C would be reimbursed for the borough. But you say no.
Well, there's no requirement under the administrative code for host community fees. Do you require host community fees, recycling services?
As I said when I spoke to the senior citizens today, they requested that the comment period be extended. Could you extend the comment period for additional 30 days?
Yes, we can do that. Is there anyone?
Yeah, hi.
Mayor?
Yes. Linda Schwager, mayor of Oakland, did you need my home address?
Please.
14 Raven, R-A-E-B-E-N-P. So I'm coming up here right in the beginning because there seems to be a lot of confusion on dates. So you stated that the initial hearing of the VCUA was in 2017. Is that correct?
Yes. The initial hearing was September 17th, 2017.
And then in 2018, a resolution in the county among freeholders at that time. And then in 2019, certain directives issued by the DEP. Why, I think, four years later, what happened in between?
I think the Bergen County freeholders and Bergen County commissioners did not take action on the matter. So therefore, we were required to conduct another hearing based on the EEP requirements that were subsequent to our first hearing.
So it's that document for four years here. So then, one of your exhibits is the site plan from 2017. Nothing's been updated since 2017? Again, four years later?
Mayor, these are not our exhibits. Yeah, they're not the authorities' exhibits.
Yours.
But it's just as your house. If your house is the way it was built, you wouldn't have the plans for that. So site plan is what's planned for the property. So if there's no changes to that plan, that plan you would consider.
I understand. I do understand those things. But you got the Highlands exemption in 2020, yet the environmental impact statement from 2023. Has Highlands been able to review that statement?
I have to put that question to the applicant, as the applicant's exhibits.
The Highlands has not reviewed it, but it was not a requirement for them to review it as part of their Highlands exemption.
All right. The survey was prepared when? You said 2.03 acres.
The survey was prepared January 9th of 2015.
And you're telling me nothing has changed over the years?
Well, I don't know that nothing, but the boundary of the property has not changed. And the topography of the property is generally the same as it was back to 2015.
We've had flooding. We've had a lot of changes going on. And so you're basing everything back on the survey from 2015?
Correct.
All right. Another issue, again, I'm just asking these questions just because of some confusion. You talked about the exits and exits of 287.
Correct.
Which is, as you're saying, is near the property. Now, if you're going north on 287, it's very easy to exit right on West Oakland Avenue, as you said.
Right on West?
West Oakland Avenue. However, if you're coming down from 208 onto 287 going south, to get off at West Oakland Avenue, you either have to get off in the middle of town or the next exit is Skyline Drive. And the question I have is, has anybody ever tried to get off that exit and imagine a truck that's, that is Skyline Drive, West Oakland Avenue? I don't even know if the trucks can make that turn.
If you're asking, I've driven a truck and tried to make a turn.
I'm asking the applicant. It's a question I'm opening up because you're saying that it's an easy exit and entrance for 287, but it's not according to the direction you're coming from. So that's really an uncapped statement depending where the trucks are coming from.
You didn't say easy. He said that.
The applicant just mentioned that it was an exit, however, that is noted. Remember, thank you.
Also... I'm sorry. I think that you were saying... The applicant's?
I did not hear the applicant mention that it was an easy exit, just it was, the applicant, in general, was identifying the exits.
And just some more clarification, you talked about, you, you said you don't see there any change in noise in the, what it seems to be now in the future?
I think the way I worded it was there would be no significant impacts. And it would be similar to the types of uses on the property today and surrounding the property today.
So my question to that is, the uses now are inside of the material or is it also outside?
There is no building on the site today.
So everything is outside?
Correct.
So all this will happen exterior, so the noise and dust, everything is going to be exterior. And yet, if I heard that we will have a way of mediating the dust or controlling the dust and the noise?
Correct.
Exterior?
Correct. So as the machines are working, they're spraying water on the material as it's being crushed and or moved around, which limits any dust getting shot up into the air.
And furthermore, I don't know you, David, these were just questions of confusion. I may come back up. The noise, you said hours of operation, you're claiming would be Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Correct.
And on Saturday, starting at 7:00 a.m.
To 3:00 p.m.
But have you checked on noise already? That's my question.
On that, I have not.
Yeah, that's correct. You have not.
I need another question here.
Name your name. Jerry Anger Miller from 24th Avenue Terrace.
Please spell your name.
Jerry?
Yes.
J-E-R-R-I, and her name is A-N-G-E-R-N, and her's B-O-L-E-R.
And your address?
24th Avenue Terrace.
Thank you.
I just have a question about fuel to run the machines. If it's used electricity, if it's used petroleum, and if the machine is running, do you have to store the fuel on site or how are the machines operating?
Okay. My understanding is it's stored on site and it gets delivered to the property.
So how much will it be stored on the site?
Okay. I didn't hear, I, I don't hear.
A thousand gallons.
A thousand gallons.
What's your name?
My name is David Simin.
Is this your name?
S-I-M-I-N.
Thank you.
Would you swear, you mind counsel, please, while I approach the cleaner area? Tell me if you're ready. Any comments or testimony against the firm's wording of truth, not the truth?
Thank you.
Hey, it's David Simin, S-I-M-I-N. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Matthew Gilson from Malina Law Group. I am the borough attorney for the borough of Oakland. Just as a jurisdictional...
Say your name.
Gilson, G-I-L-S-O-N.
Thank you.
I know there has been some confusion, so what is the block and lot that it was down the site plan?
The block is block 103, lot 5.
I'd like to make the board aware for purposes of record that the notice indicates that it is block 5, lot 103. And Oakland registers as objection. The notice adds insufficient for registering the wrong lot and block. I have just a few questions regarding the noise. Have there been any studies conducted as to noise that will occur on the property?
When you say studies are new, can you be more specific on it?
Any studies as to the noise output that this facility would create?
The EIS was prepared and it looks at the noise in that EIS.
And it what?
And it looks at the noise within that EIS.
And have any traffic studies been conducted?
Again, in that EIS, there is a limited component to the proposed traffic and/or existing traffic of the current site.
And as a planner, you conducted a planning analysis as to this proposed use in connection with the borough ordinances of Oakland.
Just limited in that reviewing the permitted uses within the I-1 zone and noting specifically, which I put on the record, that a permitted use within the I-1 zone includes open storage yards, storage of building materials, contractors' equipment and supplies, and similar materials. So again, I believe not only is this a permitted use, it's clearly within the I-1 zones per se.
So have you analyzed this as to prohibit uses of the I-1 zone?
I have not.
So are you aware that the I-1 zone prohibits any other trade or use that is noxious or offensive by reason of the emission of odor, dust, and smoke, gas, or noise?
Yeah, I see that.
And are you offering planning testimony that this will not have a noxious or offensive emission of odor, dust, smoke, gas, or noise?
Again, it will be similar to the use that's on the property today as part of the materials and the equipment that's on the site. So I don't anticipate any issues that would be significantly different than what occurs on the site today.
And similar to the mayor's question, you are familiar with the previous submission in 2017?
I am familiar with it.
Were you involved in that process?
I was not testifying before it or presenting the application, but I generally understand what was presented.
So can you describe, I'll read that. So were you involved in the 2020 Highlands exemption process?
My office was. I was not personally involved in it.
And on what date was this application submitted to the VCUA?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Can you give me a ballpark, a year, was it 2022, 2023?
I can't say. It was September 17th, 2017.
And there was no subsequent? This is just a rehearing. There is no subsequent submission made? No, any additional documents provided at any point?
There were documents submitted subsequent to the September 17 date during the public hearing process.
For the, and for example, in 2023, no additional documents had been submitted?
That's correct.
To the ECUA? That's all my questions. That's kind of, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard?
Yes, good afternoon. This is the panel. Folks here today with their application. My name is Assemblyman Robert Vaughn. Thank you, T A. Okay, so first of all, I want to discuss copso. You said that there was no regulation for copso coming into this facility. Is that correct?
It's not regulated under the Class B requirements. There are regulations on copso which they would have to comply with separate of the Class B rules.
And it was stated then that soil that had been contaminated by motor vehicle oils or gasoline would not be introduced into this site? Is that correct?
Correct.
And what are the, what is the oversight that you use currently? You do own other facilities, is that correct? That you're operating, you're not neophytes? You're doing this as a regular business? Am I correct?
If you're asking me.
No, the, the onus.
We don't have another recycling.
This is, this is the first one?
That's correct.
Oh, great. Okay, so what will be the oversight to make sure that that doesn't get snuck in? Because there's a concern by the community that the groundwater is going to be contaminated.
I think I testified to it. Actually, I don't have to think. I know I testified to it. There are requirements within the Class B rules that all materials brought to the site have to come with a proper manifest and they have to be certified that the material coming onto the site meets the requirements of the approved uses or the approved materials to be processed on the property as part of the Class B approval of the D P. So as I stated, they are not proposing any or they are not allowing any contaminated materials on the property. So if any manifest comes and there's contaminated materials, then they're a violation of that approval.
Okay. So the next thing was you stated that you don't run the recycling. You don't run any other facilities similar to what you're proposing here today, right? Have you worked with one?
No.
None? And the people who are going to operate the facility, have they worked with them before?
Yes.
Yes. And are they associated with any other firms?
The people that are, we don't have approvals yet. So we don't have any employees that we're hiring at this moment.
Well, what I'm trying to.
Could you speak up, please?
Sorry, we don't have, we don't have employees for this recycling service. It's not approved yet.
Right, so what I'm trying to get at is somewhere along the line, there are spot inspections that was mentioned in the testimony earlier. And I'm trying to find out if the people who are going to be running this site have had inspections done before and have they passed or failed? Have there been any failures? Or what is the failure rate of some of the inspections that they have worked back in the past?
You can't answer that.
Sure, there are only two recycling centers, facilities of this type in Bergen County at the present time. So it's difficult. I assure you that my client will be hiring people who are experienced and people who know what guidelines they need to follow.
Those assurances are very, very heartwarming. Okay. You mentioned, and at the time you gave some testimony, sir, back to you, that the property is currently used for storage of equipment, correct?
Equipment and materials, correct.
Equipment and materials. And you sort of inferred in your comments that because it's being used for storage of trucks and like that there would be no real difference in the volume of traffic that would be going in and out of the facility? So I want to try to clarify that for the public. Because I was a little bit confused myself. So you're not inferring or you're not stating that there won't be any increase in volume of traffic going into the facility, are you, or are you?
I'm not stating that. I'm saying it's going to be similar to what occurs on the property today.
But a storage facility is not even closely similar to a facility that's inviting people to come in and drop off materials for recycling and then depart and maybe come back two, three, four, five times in a day? As opposed to trucks that are maybe sitting there and were not using this for three weeks and it just sits there and there's no volume on the roadways?
I can answer that.
Great.
Right now, there's multiple tenants that are on this property that, with landscapers, contractors, the contractor vehicles, and similar to those outside. Every day, they have multiple trucks that leave and go to the yard multiple times a day, not just once, multiple times a day. They go and to from the yard multiple times a day. So that's why our engineers said that there's not going to be no impact of expecting to be more traffic.
Well, just if I can follow up with that. You said landscapers. So if a landscaper leaves in the morning, he's out doing his draft throughout the day and then comes back at night. So he's not going to be coming back regularly. That doesn't make sense.
From the owner of the property, and I also watch what's going on because I should, I do see a lot of our tenants come back multiple times during the day.
That would have been on the.
And it's not all landscapers there. There's pool, there's pool tenants there. There's truck drivers that are there. So everybody comes back to their yard to get something if they forgot something or they need to get more materials. So they do come in multiple times during the day.
Okay, thanks for that. Now, let's talk about the road integrity. What do you expect the weight of the truck to be empty? And then the weight of the truck when it's full? Because they're going to be coming in full and I guess they're going to be leaving empty.
Most trucks are going to be, there's going to be multiple different sizes of trucks, from pickup trucks to mason dumps to tandem trucks, like the engineer said. So the biggest truck is a triaxle dump truck, as we know today. And those trucks are, they carry 8,000 pounds forward loaded, empty. I think they're about probably, you know, 20, 25,000 pounds empty.
And we all know that Oakland has problems with bridges, most notably against Patriots Way Bridge. Are there any bridges between, let's say, 287 and that facility that those trucks have to cross?
Not from my knowledge.
Not from my knowledge. Okay, and do we anticipate that the roads are going to take any unnecessary or additional stress that's normally not expected on that roadway between the sufficient weight coming in and out of it regularly?
We don't foresee that.
Okay, one other thing that you mentioned, which I'm concerned about, and the residents are too, again, with contamination of well water and so on. You mentioned that you spray water on the material that's being crushed or broken down. However, you're breaking it to its final size before you're shipping it out again. What happens to the water that is sprayed on this material? Where is its ultimate resting place? Where does the grain go off to? Or where is it being or how is it?
Well, it's enough water to keep the dust down. So ultimately, as that stockpile builds, there's water in that stockpile. And if they're removing that material on site that day, it could get into the dump trucks and leave the property as part of a delivery to a site. But if it doesn't leave the property and it seeps down, then it would follow the natural topography and head towards the southern edge of the property line.
And so we have to hope that there's no contaminants in there?
Well, you don't have to hope because the applicant is certifying and based on the D P's requirements for the Class B materials that there would be no contaminated products on the property.
And isn't everyone just any bad actress in the world?
I don't know.
Oh, that's it. I guess we don't know. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Just as a point, there is a bridge that is nearby. The Crescent Bridge?
It's the what? I can't hear you. It's the what bridge?
There's a bridge that goes over West Oakland Avenue. If they get off at exit 58 and have to go to the other end of West Oakland Avenue, there will be a bridge, just so the assemblyman knows that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Johnny Kimmick, Boswell Engineering, Borough Engineer Representative for the Borough of Oakland.
Spell your name, sir.
Y A K I M I K. For the record, I have a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standing. I am not a professional planner. I am not licensed as a professional planner. So any testimony I give with regard to planning technically is not valid. I just want to say that, first of all, I represent that I have close to 40 years of experience as a professional engineer and 30 years as a municipal engineer. I was in the original Certified Municipal Engineers course that the gentleman has put forth as one of his qualifications. Boswell Engineering has been the Borough Engineer for, I believe, a couple of decades. We are very familiar with the borough. We are very familiar with the town. A particular, a first concern of mine is what we refer as reviewing engineers as the intensity of the use and the intensity of the site. My question is, will the site become more intense in its current use? And by that, I want to focus on the weight of the material coming in, the size of the trucks coming in, the size of the trucks leaving, the frequency of the trucks coming in, the frequency of the trucks leaving. And as a result of that, has the, will the intensity of the use increase?
I think too, it depends on what that means. I can't answer that. I don't think there's going to be an impact, like our engineer said, in the intensity of the use.
So from what is going on now, there'll be no greater weight of materials coming into the site, no greater noise, no greater odors, and no greater detrimental or items that affect the quality of life of residential properties that are on the route from 287 to the facility?
That's correct. The testimony was no significant impact.
Significant is a relative term. Thank you.
It is.
The purpose of the environmental impact statement and it being authored, what was its purpose?
As I stated on the record, we prepared the EIS to compare what is being operated and occurring on the site today and compare that with the proposed use. And if there were any significant changes or significant impacts to the environment as part of that change use.
And, but why was it prepared? Who required it, if any?
I don't know who required it. I was asked by the applicant to prepare, or my office was asked by the applicant to prepare the EIS in support of this application.
And in preparing the EIS, whose standards did you use in preparing the EIS?
Again, I stated on the record that when we looked at the ordinance of the borough, there was no requirements for an EIS. So we anecdotally kind of pick and choose from EIS requirements around the state and put together something that we thought was appropriate for the intended use of the property and the environmental impacts associated with that.
I, may I call you chairman? I remain confused why the EIS was prepared and what its purpose was. Quite frankly, if there are no standards associated with it. I want to talk about the term that you used, contaminated. And what does contaminated mean as far as the use of this site?
It was pretty clear that we were talking about petroleum contaminated soils.
And in your mind, anything beyond that is not contaminated?
As long as it meets the Class B regulations for the materials being used, then it is not a contaminated material as far as the class rules are concerned.
There was a report of perhaps unused tires being brought to the site. Is that true or false?
As part of the Class B proposal.
Correct.
My understanding is we wouldn't be using tires as part of this. As I testified to is the materials would be concrete, bricks, asphalt, and concrete block are the materials that they would be recycling. All of them, just such.
So in your mind, tires would not be recycled as part of this, old used tires?
Correct.
The application is consistent with the testimony for concrete, asphalt, brick, brick and concrete block.
Okay, well, thank you. The purpose of the arboriding buffer, what is the purpose of that?
It's just to help further screen the property from West Oakland Avenue.
What is on West Oakland Avenue that needs to be screened?
There's traffic. There's potentially residents further to the south.
And those residents would be concerned in your mind about visual only?
I don't know what they are concerned with. I haven't spoken with them.
Okay, obviously, my concern is the residents who are in close proximity. And why only taking the effort to visually screen and nothing else when it's quite, from your testimony, difficult to see the site of cause of elevation? I'm more concerned, as the Borough Engineer, of impacts with regard to the intensity of use, the higher weight trucks, the higher noise levels, the higher odor levels that will result of this use. And I just want to say for the record, I don't believe that the applicant has given sufficient testimony for us to believe that current conditions on the site will not become more intense. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish you to be heard?
Mr. Chairman, may I just amend one thing? We talked about petroleum products. Asphalt is a petroleum product. Is that, is asphalt going to be heated up? Or is there anything that's going to be done to that asphalt that could leach into the, into the property? Another question that we need to know.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Hello?
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break? Okay, thank you.
My name is Steve. I'm a resident of Oakland. I live at 69 Glen Gray Road. And I'm a resident. I'm a lawyer. I'm an engineer. Probably the best thing that I do is pay my taxes on time. And I have two comments. I've got a lot, but I'm just going to focus on two as it relates to this petition. I'm one of the few people in Oakland that lives on Septic. Actually, we all, a lot of us do. I apologize for that. But I'm one of the few people that do have lowmar. I've got two quick comments and then I'll just elaborate on the comments. So the Septic system, we had to follow the New Jersey guideline that I think was passed back in 2009 and where we had to have the whole thing re-engineered. And it cost me about $40,000. And it was about $3,000 or $4,000 more than the budget plan. And the reason why, and I think the engineers might know this. I know someone from our town does. There is a specific sand that needs to be certified and where it's brought in. sand that needs to be certified and where it's brought in. So we have an engineer for the project that overlooks the installation of the Septic system, which includes making sure that the sand is sourced from a certified quarry or wherever supplies the sand is, $900 a truckload. The reason why we spent $3,000 or $4,000 more, there was some design issues and then there was also the need that was directed by the Bergen County Health Department to do continuous tests of the sand that was poured into the area that amounted to about seven feet deep of sand. So the Board of Health, the Bergen County Board of Health did not trust the source who was certified to put the sand in the ground. And the reason why is because of things that were done in the past by somebody who used the term bad actors. They exist. So I wouldn't trust anything, and I'm speaking as a resident, I wouldn't trust anything unless we know that there's going to be deeper scrutiny on what will be considered certified because it does happen. Now that leads into the well. I had a well and now I have to spend about $1,000 a year to have a full spectrum testing of the quality of my well water to rule out the PFAS chemicals and a bunch of other things that include arsenic, this, that, and the other. And if I go to sell my house, I do need to show a history of that, that testing in order, if we do sell the house, in order for the buyer to get a certificate of occupancy, occupancy, it has to pass. I'm going to go into a third area, but actually, let me stick with the well water. I think everybody in our town, the whole town is serviced by Oakland's well water. And we have, we have water that the last couple of years, everybody is, is very, very high stress levels because of the implications of the PFAS measures, which, you know, you got one point of view where it, which it isn't that bad, but you got another point of view, it's, it's not following the state's guideline, sir.
Yeah, I'll conclude in a minute.
If you can connect it.
Yeah, I'm going to connect that here. So where I'm going with this, I think for the people in this town to really have some sense of, okay, is this a reasonable petition that we can understand and feel comfortable about? I think we need to understand that it's not going to upset our, the aquifers that service our well water in this town. And that comes into just a comment about the business that's going to be operated that will process some 40 or 50 truckloads a day. That might be the estimate, but, and I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but you're going to be hiring people, which suggests that you're going to need this to operate the business. I have a couple of other questions and I'm not looking for an answer today, but, you know, sooner rather than later, I'd, I'd like to understand what the business model is and how much profit that you anticipate making off of this business, which would translate to processing all of whatever's going in. And I understand it's going to be processed and then it's going to go out. So you're not hiring people because it's not making you a profit and come back to what's appropriate and what's not. The people in this town, there's other things that are going on in this town that people that are going to feel comfortable about it. Then the question is, what's, what's this, is this going to do to help reduce some of our tax money that we can, that the town can enjoy some level of revenue stream, not from the county or the state, but from the business model? I think that's a reasonable thing that, that I'm going to be pushing as a resident that we should look at to consider if, if we can get on board with this.
Are we going to go start asking all other businesses in town what their profit margins are and ask them to contribute to it?
I didn't know what's appropriate and what isn't, and I'm not here to debate.
Well, I would suggest that what you've suggested is inappropriate for this hearing, Mr. Chairman. We're not, we're not here to talk about.
Counselor, if I may, he, he can say what he wants to say. It may be disregarded.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's why I don't like you people. I'm done. Can't say I like you either.
Now you're being confrontational.
Sir, sir, sir. I understand.
Hi, my name is Jo Chet, C-H-E-T-C-H. I live at 18 Crosby Lane in Oakwood.
I live at?
18 Crosby, Leaping Crosby Lane in Oakwood.
Can you spell your first name?
J-L-A-N.
Thank you.
Okay. I wanted to say two things. I volunteer as the ambulance squad in town. I just wanted to reiterate what the mayor said about the Skyline Drive exit being a very dangerous exit. You see a lot of bad accidents there. The idea of a tandem heavenly loaded truck making that cross terrifies me. The other question I have is you mentioned a weigh station in the facility.
A scale house.
A scale house, and that's going to be how far in?
I believe there is an exhibit which, I believe it's a scale house.
I guess, I guess the basis of my question is how many trucks could stack up waiting for the scale house?
Your question would be, will there be, you know, a pack to the road?
Well, yeah, because West Oakland is a narrow windy road.
Oh, I'm sorry, because what?
West Oakland is a narrow windy road. And we're, you know, I think there needs to be some provision, maybe if, say, 10 trucks show up at the end of the day, you can't have 10 trucks lining that road, traffic coming around it, there will be head-on collisions.
To answer your question, scales approximately 50 feet into the property.
So two trucks?
At the edge of the property, yes.
Yeah.
Depending on if they're leaving the site and getting measured or coming into the site, it'll, it'll depend on where the cars are parked or keeling, so it's.
Okay. I mean, is, is there any way to make a requirement? I mean, but then if the truck arrives and it can't sit on the road, how does it, what does it do? You know, does it wind up going through the little tiny streets that if you turn left, you go on Dodie Road, which sends you over another bridge that I don't know if it has that capacity? And then there are a number of narrow streets in there that, you know, I'm just saying, traffic, traffic planning has to be a big part of this and it, to me, it seems very dangerous.
Just a thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chairman. My name is Eric, last name is Kulala, not to speak to you, but the vice president is K-U-L-M-A-L-A. I have a letter here I'd like to put into the record from the planning board.
Sure.
Okay, exhibit. Okay, I'm just going to read you a paragraph real quick. The board is extremely concerned with myriad of problems.
I'm sorry, you have to speak slow.
Okay. The board is extremely concerned with the myriad problems associated with such a facility. More specifically, the board is concerned with the impact on the residential neighboring properties because it appears to be inevitable that there will be extremely loud noises, odors, dust, and possible traffic congestion, especially when considering the location of this facility being in close proximity to the Ramapo River and Potash Lake. Okay? As set forth in the notice, the VCU Way anticipates accepting 900 tons per day of Class B recyclables.
I'm sorry, the VCU Way anticipates?
Accepting 900 tons per day of Class B recyclables, which applies to approximately 40 trucks on any given day. I'm not going to read the rest, I'm just going to turn it over to, for the record.
And just a clarification, an understatement, if the VCU is not accepting, it's a second case, it would be exciting.
Okay, leave the way I put it there. Thank you.
Thank you. How was that number? Okay.
A couple of questions. First of all.
Just one second.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, just a couple of questions. The gentleman at the proprietor, do you guys live in town by any chance?
No, I don't.
You don't? Okay. How would you feel if a facility like this was put in the town as you know?
I think if a facility was going to, recycling facility, I think is something that everybody wants today. We recycle our garbage, our trash. It's kind of, it's kind of the same for recycling our road materials. Me and my partner have been in construction for over 30 years and there's not enough facilities in the state of New Jersey to recycle materials and benefit towns for paying contractors to do road work for instance. So maybe there could be a savings down the road for municipalities in that respect as, as the prior sir was talking about. So in that way, it does help the towns because they can pay contractors less money for using recycled materials instead of virgin materials that cost twice the amount.
Okay, so I guess where I'm going with this is, the reason I asked you the question, I'm sure the plan, are you going to continue working property and see where the residential properties are with regards to where the plans are located?
Yes.
And how far is the closest residential property to the, to the recycling plant?
From the property line, across the right away, it's approximately 60 feet from the edge of the property to the first residential property.
There you go. So you got 60 feet, you've got all the properties in the Dodie Road area, okay? You've got the properties on West Oakland Avenue, okay? I, I mean, this is, and you made a statement that, you know, you're going to be doing a lot of pressure on that engineer on what kind of noise it makes or anything else like that. And also, how far is it to the river and the Potash Lake?
You're approximately 80 feet plus or minus from the edge of the property to what looks to be the first water course.
Okay. So I guess what was really kind of bothering me here is the fact that you got Highlands exemption for this and I guess it really talks about how opaque this whole process has been because I heard dates that this, this chairman started in 2014 or it started before that?
No, 2017.
2017 started. So let me ask you a question for the plan. When were you hired and brought onto this project?
My office was involved from the beginning. I think we were initially brought on by the applicant in 2016.
So this process started in 2016? Correct. And the reason I'm saying that this process has been pretty opaque, did, did the residents of Oakland, in the surrounding areas, did they receive notice about this hearing delivered to them, certified by attorney, or anything?
No.
They received all notices required.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
They received all notices that are required.
Okay, so if it wasn't for us, you know, bringing this up publicly, nobody really has an idea about this if they don't read the Herald of the Record.
It's also published on the VCU, a web study, Bergen County, Bergen Web Study.
Okay. And the other question, as once we got word of this process, the borough started, I believe our planner tried Oprah, the Highlands Commission, right after we found out about this, and we didn't even receive Oprah information back from the Highlands as we started learning about this. So it doesn't seem very opaque in this whole process. We're learning that it started in 2017, you have Highlands exemption, you've got DEP exemption, and now here we are finding out about it.
There's, there's, I'm not sure what you're referring to in regards to DEP exemption.
I believe that you testified that something about there was DEP permits?
In 2019.
2019, yes, Mayor.
2019, the DEP issued certain directives. That's all you said about DEP?
The DEP issued certain directives to the VCUA in regards to a plan amendment public hearings that areas need to be located within the municipality during the business hours.
Okay.
That was a notification to the VCUA, not the applicant, in regards every plan amendment that the county hears.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your clarification. Also, you made a comment, could you just reiterate the, the noise, how you came up, the fact that the noise isn't going to be any different from what was in the past?
Again, so, I mean, if you look at the area listed shown there, again, exhibit that, based on the ongoing utilize, or use of the property along with the neighboring properties to the northeast and west and that train, the operations proposed on property are not going to have significant changes to the noise volumes that are currently observed in that area.
Have you actually been down here and watched the train run?
I have not.
Have you watched the train runs?
I prefer, or defer to the applicant on that.
I mean, more than once a day? Couple of days a day? I mean, that's about the only time it comes to that.
It's more than that.
It's a bit of a weakness to say that it's a regular train.
I'm sorry, one at a time?
It's more, it's more than that, more than once a day.
Also, can you also expand a little bit on the size of these piles?
When you say expand on the size of the pile?
You said height?
I did say height. And I did say the Class B materials would be no higher than 30 feet from.
Okay.
All right, and topsoil would be 20 feet.
So just, just for purpose of comparison for the residents, 30 feet is approximately three-story building, is that correct?
Three basketball hoops stacked on top of each other.
Right, three-story building, 10 feet.
Plus or minus, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a pretty big one.
All right, and what else do I have here? Oh, the resident mentioned about low water. There is an entire area called Island Terrace down there, which is not fed by municipal water. So is there any possibility of contamination at all as far as getting into the water and the aquifers?
Yeah, the applicant testified numerous times that they will not be accepting any contaminant material.
Except for asphalt.
Also, would it be possible, seeing that this is a bit of a contentious issue in the town, to have the, extend the public comment for additional 30 days for our residents?
A recorded.
Would you agree for that? And also, would it be possible before any construction takes place in a monitoring well, be tested and have monitoring well be in place going forward for any contaminants?
We do not have that kind of thing.
We do not have that.
Kind of.
It's a big concern of ours.
But we can at least put it in the record.
Part of the record.
All right, that's all, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish you to be heard?
My last again.
Okay, go ahead.
You sure?
Oh, yeah.
We've had applicants come before us, planning board counsel, whereby they wanted to exceed our noise ordinance, which cannot begin before a certain time in the morning. And you claim that your operations would be 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, which far exceeds our noise ordinance. Now, doesn't our noise, doesn't our ordinances supersede what they want to do?
I think that's a legal question, Mayor. This is governed by the regulations.
I'm just posing that as a question, Chairman. It was just a statement.
Thank you.
Interesting question.
It was a statement.
Interesting question.
Steve Penose here. Okay. 69 Glen Gray. It's more of a refinement, my question, and by the way, I, I really appreciate your tone and some of the things that you had mentioned in terms of, there's.
I really appreciate your what?
Oh, your, his tone.
Okay.
Okay, his vocal tone. And some of the things that you had talked about that perhaps maybe the town of Oakland could benefit from. There's a lot of erosion in our towns that maybe need for some of the output from, from the business. As it relates to the business, I had mentioned business model, but again, I'm catching up with this. I certainly answered the lawyer here's question, is there any other business in town that has, shares a business model? I'm not going to go into the details of what it is, but the answer is yes.
I'm sorry, could you speak?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can't hear what you're saying.
Okay. In the context of, of asking the question earlier about the business sharing their business model and their projected profit, and then I think the lawyer's name is Jerry, he had asked, does any other business in town do that? And the answer is, without getting into details, there is a business and future businesses that will be sharing their revenue so that the town can enjoy its percentage of that revenue. So coming back to this, there's another question that I would pose to whoever in town has to look at this, whether it's the town engineer or the planning committee. Perhaps another way of asking the question is, given all of these height, height limits of each of these, you know, holding areas, I think it was 30 feet and then 20 feet for the topsoil, so that suggests that there's a min and max. So as materials are coming in to be processed and then leaving, the question would be, what would be the maximum output? If, if everything was delivered and everything was processed but not picked up, that suggests that there's a max, which you'd have to stop everything until it's good.
Stop the material from coming in.
So I think, I don't know how to articulate the question yet, but there's a way of asking the question, what would be the min and max, what is your maximum output on a great day, a great season? And maybe perhaps if there's a range, we can understand and ask, answer the question about noise level, the use of fuel, this, that, and the other, whatever. It's, it's end of my comment, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Jerry, I apologize.
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard?
I have a procedural question. On behalf of the residents, I have a, on behalf of the residents, hi, I have a procedural question. And we thank you for extending the 30-day public comment period. How can the residents, or how can we, because we here, I give for the residents daily, how can we get those comments to you?
You can provide written comments to, to my attention at the VCU Ways, which is box nine. A little further.
All right, so the residents though, could contact me, email me, I could send them to you or they could contact you directly?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Then the 30 days from today.
Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John McCann, 13 Ones Way.
I'll just one second. Tony Liston, please.
M-C-C-A-M-M. I have a quick question, Mr. Sun. Can you just mention a moment about this was a legal question that was posed? You said you discussed it with Brian, is that Brian's house?
Yes, this application goes back several years and there was some previous comment from Borough back in 2018 regarding what hearings might be required, what regulations might apply. One of the discussions, it was a general discussion, was the DEP has certain regulations, the municipality has certain regulations, and in these instances, which ones supersede which ones? We didn't, we didn't come to a conclusion, but we had a discussion about it.
Would, would you say it's an open question?
I don't think so, because I think on certain very specific things that the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection says we have to do, regardless of what the Borough says, we have to meet the DEP regulations. You know, so.
What we've asked you is, would you describe it as a squishy legal issue, uncertain?
No, I think under the supremacy clause, the New Jersey state rules and regulations govern. That's, that's just my opinion. Only one man's opinion.
That's why we have lawyers.
So on, on that topic, when did you first discuss it? Do you recall when you first discussed this with Brian?
Back in or about 2017, there's some correspondence that he submitted to the BCUA on behalf of the Borough objecting, and there was some discussion about whether or not we would have to come before the Planning Board, and it was in that context that we had that discussion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard? If not, we'll close.
I gotta say something. I gotta say something.
Sorry.
Todd Horn, 82 Manito. Todd, T-O-D-D, Horn, H-O-R-N, Manito, 82 Manito Avenue, here in Oakland.
Spell it, avenue, spell it.
Manito, M-A-N-I-T-O, Avenue. Just quick, I didn't come here prepared with anything, I just found out about this yesterday. My one question is, the hours of operation are from 6 on Fri, Monday through Friday until, I think, 6 at night. So I know for me as a resident, I can't even start a lawnmower or do anything at those hours of time. So what's gonna stop or who's gonna police the effect of starting hours at 6:00 in the morn, you're gonna have employees showing up, I'm assuming, could be 5:00 in the morning, could be 5:30, starting the equipment up? Who's going to force vehicles that are coming in there at 4:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning, stacking up? I know somebody else brought that up. I know there's also, from what I've reviewed, the two train tracks, the same train track, but they're gonna have to go over two different entry points of train tracks. Has anybody contacted the train company or whoever owns the trains, if this is going to be an effect on them? And how is this going to affect the other companies that are in there? There's, I know Mason Supply Company's in there, there's Coffee Company in there. If you have trucks that are potentially stacking up, you have landscapers that are in there, how is all this gonna work on such a narrow road?
I can, I can address the enforcement question. Under the Administrative Code, the SEHA, which is the Campaign for the Health Act, the municipality can enforce recycling regulations, and the ultimate enforcement is the Department of Environmental Protection, and they will often, and they do in Bergen County, will provide enforcement abilities also to the Bergen County Department of Health Services, who have enforcement ability over solid waste facilities and recycling facilities.
I, I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is, and this is all hearsay right at this point, if you have trucks that are showing up before hours, is that now on Oakland Police Department that they're gonna be getting calls from local residents that are saying, I'm hearing equipment running, I'm hearing, are there tractor-trailers involved here? I know there's triaxles. The, the business that I'm in is a Mason Supply Company, and we can't have tractor-trailers lined up in front of our business at certain hours. And I just, I don't see that this is gonna be, okay, we open up at 6:00 in the morning and people are showing up at 6, 6:30. I see this, oh, I'm a contractor, whoever's bringing the stuff in there, they're gonna be sitting out there. Are they gonna be sitting out on 287? Or are they gonna be sitting on West Oakland Ave? Are they gonna be sitting on Edison Ave? I know for me, I'm a salesman, I drive a pickup truck, I've been down there numerous times. It's a very tight road. If you get people that are rejected from bringing stuff in, how are you, it just seems to me there's just gonna be a lot of confusion. And then as far as residents are concerned, I mean, again, I work for a Mason Supply Company, we do not crush material. I have been involved in a plan to do, do it. It's not a quiet fact. And I just, as a resident, if I lived there, 80 feet away, 60 feet away, whatever they said, I don't think, you know, I wouldn't wanna hear that at 6:00 in the morning.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing to public comment. Again, as stated previously, we will keep the record open for, for additional 30 days. All of the comments, all of the exhibits, all the additional exhibits that were entered into the record will be part of the formal record. And in addition to that, residents will also have, the public will also have two additional opportunities to be heard on this plan amendment, which needs to be heard by the Bergen County Commissioners, who will also conduct two public hearings regarding this plan and taking any formal action. And again, this public hearing is for inclusion of, of the facility into the Bergen County plan. It's not for permitting of the facility. That is handled by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection through the permitting process. That being said, I'll close today's public hearing and thank you, everyone, for attending.
You carry? Carry, Debbie. Oh.